Okay, thank you Ron. Good evening. Welcome to the regular monthly meeting of the Board of Commissioners held for the purpose of transacting the general business of the township. Today's date is July 10, 2019. The meeting is being held in the Springfield Township Building. Please stand and join the Board of Commissioners in a moment of silent reflection honoring the servicemen and women who place themselves in harm's way in order to help preserve our Thank you. Please remain standing and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this point, I would entertain a motion dispensing with the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting as written and recorded in the official minute book of the township. Do we have a second? Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote. We are in full complement up here tonight, and I want to acknowledge State Representative Steve McCarter, who's here. And Judge McGill's here, but we're about to introduce her, too. They don't like being acknowledged, I think. And I'm not acknowledging the two past Commissioners because I think you don't want me to acknowledge you. Is that right? So I hope I don't offend you.
You just did it.
Tell me, I know. Tell me in the future and I'll get it right. But I got that impression. Okay. I'm gonna go ahead and do it because I like to do it. Commissioner Bob Gillies and Commissioner Jim Daly are here tonight, and we welcome them back. At this point, let me just give you the roadmap for the meeting. We have some matters here involving the Police Department that are a lot of fun that we're gonna do first, and then we're gonna acknowledge one of our township residents. And then, for those of you who are here mainly for Hoss Lane, but for anything else, we will then move into the public comment period. Then we'll do what we call our committee reports, which is our voting, and then there'll be final public comment at the very end. So at this point, I would like to recognize the Police Chief Michael Pitco and the Magisterial District Justice Kate McGill. District Justice McGill would administer the oath of office to Patrol Officers Brian McCowsky and Ryan Brown.
All right, thank you Commissioner. So I'm delighted and honored to welcome and introduce two new police officers joining our department this evening, which gets us back up to authorized manpower. The gentleman before you this evening has performed well on all aspects of a very vigorous testing process that began in March. The officers will swear to obey, support, and defend the Constitution, the laws of the United States, the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, also Springfield Township, and obey the law impartially. This oath is a backbone of what we do each and every day. The career of a police officer is extremely rewarding, but as the officers in this room tonight know, is also difficult at times. Fortunately, we live and work in a great community with a relatively low crime rate. One of the reasons that we have that is the excellent work of all the men and women in our Police Department on a daily basis, and I'm very proud of them for that. Arresting people is just one facet of our job. Last week, officers did a tremendous job responding to an armed robbery in progress at the Dollar Tree in Flower Town. Apprehended the male quickly, and the accomplice was apprehended about 90 minutes later in Flower Town. Some of those officers from Sergeant Mercy Squad are here. Some of the officers are here this evening from Sergeant Mercy Squad. Corporal Whitney, Officer Burrows, and Officer Sweeney, they're in the back over there, so thank you again.
Officer Ed Gross.
Oh, I'm sorry. Officer Ed Gross, he's hidden back there. Officer Ed Gross. But just as important as the arrest part of our jobs at times, it's our relationship with those in our community, and I know that we have an excellent reputation. So we welcome these officers this evening as they join a truly noble profession, and we thank the families and friends that are here this evening for also supporting them. So I'll lead off with a little bio on Officer Ryan Brown. He's a graduate of the Delaware County Community College Municipal Police Academy, graduated in December of 2018. He's a recipient of the Academic Award and Physical Conditioning Award, also a graduate of West Chester University with a Bachelor of Science degree in Criminal Justice, 2016, also advanced in Spanish and intermediate in Russian languages. Previous employment is a traffic clerk at the District Court in Exton, Pennsylvania. Brian McCowsky, also a graduate of the Delaware County Community College Municipal Police Academy, one year earlier, December of 2017. Previous employment is a part-time officer in beautiful Schuylkill Township, Chester County. Since January of 2018, also a part-time officer nearby to Schuylkill, West Pike Land Township, in February, or since February of 2019. And then we even had Brian in Montgomery County for a stint in the part-time in the Rockledge Borough Police Department from June 2018 to May of 2019. So call Officer Brian first.
I, Ryan Brown.
Do you swear?
Do swear.
That I will support?
That I will support.
Obey and defend?
Obey and defend.
Constitution?
The Constitution.
And the laws of the United States?
And the laws of the United States.
The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania?
The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the Township of Springfield?
And the Township of Springfield.
That I will faithfully discharge?
That I will faithfully discharge?
The duties of my office?
The duties of my office.
As a police officer?
As a police officer.
For Springfield Township?
For Springfield Township.
And that I will uphold?
And that I will uphold?
Obey and enforce?
Obey and enforce.
The law?
The law.
Without consideration?
Without consideration.
To a person's race?
To a person's race.
Color?
Color.
Sex?
Sex.
Religious creed?
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation?
Sexual orientation.
Age?
Age.
National origin?
National origin.
Ancestry?
Ancestry.
Handicap or disability?
Handicap or disability.
I will obey the rules and regulations?
I will obey the rules and regulations.
Policies and procedures?
Policies and procedures.
Governing sworn members?
Governing sworn members.
Of the Springfield Township Police Department.
Of the Springfield Township Police Department.
Also, I will not knowingly accept?
Also, I will not knowingly accept.
Directly or indirectly?
Directly or indirectly.
Any money?
Any money.
For other valuable things?
Or other valuable things.
For performance or non-performance?
For performance or non-performance.
Of any act or duty?
Of any act or duty.
Pertaining to my office?
Pertaining to my office.
Other than such compensation?
Other than such compensation.
As may be allowed?
As may be allowed.
By the Board of Commissioners?
By the Board of Commissioners.
Of Springfield Township?
Of Springfield Township.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, yes. Good luck, Ron.
Congratulations. Good luck to you guys.
Congratulations and welcome.
I, Brian McCowsky?
I, Brian McCowsky.
Do you swear?
Do swear.
That I will support?
That I will support.
Obey and defend?
Obey and defend.
The Constitution?
The Constitution.
And the laws of the United States?
And the laws of the United States.
The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania?
The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the Township of Springfield?
And the Township of Springfield.
That I will faithfully discharge?
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office?
Duties of my office.
As a police officer?
As a police officer.
For Springfield Township?
For Springfield Township.
And that I will uphold?
And that I will uphold.
Obey and enforce?
Obey and enforce.
The law?
The law.
Without consideration?
Without consideration.
To a person's race?
To a person's race.
Color?
Color.
Sex?
Sex.
Religious creed?
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation?
Sexual orientation.
Age?
Age.
National origin?
National origin.
Ancestry?
Ancestry.
Handicap or disability?
Handicap or disability.
I will obey the rules and regulations?
I will obey the rules and regulations.
Policies and procedures?
Policies and procedures.
Governing sworn members?
Governing sworn members.
Of the Springfield Township Police Department?
Of the Springfield Township Police Department.
Also, I will not knowingly accept?
Also, I will not knowingly accept.
Directly or indirectly?
Directly or indirectly.
Any money?
Any money.
For other valuable things?
For other valuable things.
For performance or non-performance?
For performance or non-performance.
Of any act or duty?
Of any act or duty.
Pertaining to my office?
Pertaining to my office.
Other than such compensation?
Other than such compensation.
As may be allowed?
As may be allowed.
By the Board of Commissioners?
By the Board of Commissioners.
Of Springfield Township?
Of Springfield Township.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, yes. Good luck, Ron.
Congratulations. Good luck to you guys.
Congratulations and welcome.
I, Brian McCowsky?
I, Brian McCowsky.
Do you swear?
Do swear.
That I will support?
That I will support.
Obey and defend?
Obey and defend.
The law?
The law.
Without consideration?
Without consideration.
To a person's race?
To a person's race.
Color?
Color.
Sex?
Sex.
Religious creed?
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation?
Sexual orientation.
Age?
Age.
National origin?
National origin.
Ancestry?
Ancestry.
Handicap or disability?
Handicap or disability.
I will obey the rules and regulations?
I will obey the rules and regulations.
Policies and procedures?
Policies and procedures.
Governing sworn members?
Governing sworn members.
Of the Springfield Township Police Department?
Of the Springfield Township Police Department.
Also, I will not knowingly accept?
Also, I will not knowingly accept.
Directly or indirectly?
Directly or indirectly.
Any money?
Any money.
For other valuable things?
For other valuable things.
For performance or non-performance?
For performance or non-performance.
Of any act?
Of any act.
Or duty?
Or duty.
Pertaining to my office?
Pertaining to my office.
Other than such compensation?
Other than such compensation.
As may be allowed?
As may be allowed.
By the Board of Commissioners?
By the Board of Commissioners.
Of Springfield Township?
Of Springfield Township.
Congratulations. Congratulations and welcome.
Thank you. This is one of the best things we get to do, and we're moving on to more of it. I would like to invite John Gross, retired police corporal of the Springfield Township Police Department, to come to the front of the room.
So it's with great honor that I present Resolution Number 1478, honoring your career of service to Springfield Township, Montgomery County, Pennsylvania by John R. Gross. Whereas following graduation from Devon Preparatory School, Devon, Pennsylvania, John Gross enrolled in Montgomery County Community College, subsequently graduated from the Pennsylvania State Police Academy in June of 1976. Whereas after serving as a park ranger, assigned to patrol the Valley Forge National Historic Park, Mr. Gross was hired as a Springfield Township Police Officer on February 17, 1977. Remember that?
I do.
Whereas during his early tenure as a police officer, Mr. Gross was expeditiously promoted to the rank of police corporal on October 12, 1987, and was assigned to serve as the township's traffic safety officer in 1992. And whereas in addition to his regular police duties, John Gross became a firearms instructor, a shotgun armorer, field training officer, on-scene accident investigator, advanced vehicle collision investigator, motorcycle collision investigator, and standardized field sobriety testing practitioner, and completed numerous police training classes. And whereas John Gross was known to always have the right tools to fix any office equipment or personal items that might be caused by COVID. And whereas Corporal Gross received numerous letters and memoranda of commendation from the Pennsylvania State Police, the Springfield Township Board of Commissioners, the Chief of Police, neighboring police departments, and Mothers Against Drunk Driving. And whereas John Gross was recognized by people for whom he served and protected by receiving 50 letters of appreciation from the residents of Springfield Township during his illustrious career. And now therefore being resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Springfield Township does hereby recognize, commend, and wholeheartedly thank Corporal John R. Gross for 42 years of dedicated service to Springfield Township community, and also extend best wishes to John and his family in the future. That's my motion.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Please record a unanimous vote. You're back.
So it's unanimously adopted this 10th day of July 2019, by the Board of Commissioners of Springfield Township.
All right.
Do you want to say a few words?
Just very few. I've never been one for a lot of words, but I started a career in Valley Forge Park. It was a very, very good opportunity. That's when all the wagon trains came across the country, and that's where they terminated me.
There you go.
The bicentennial in '76, and then I came here in February of '77. It's been a fantastic career. I never have really had any regrets coming to Springfield Township. It's been a very wonderful community to live in. I promptly bought a house in Flower Town, and as my family expanded, 34 years ago, I had to move just into, across the border in Upper Dublin, but I'd never been more than just a few miles from the Township Building here. And it's been, as I said, a very rewarding career, not only the Police Department, but early on, when I wasn't working here, I was running calls for Springfield Ambulance and putting the time in there as volunteers. And a lot has changed over all those years, a very lot. But I wouldn't trade it for anything, and I'd do it again in a heartbeat. And thank you all for your honor.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Okay, all right.
So there is one other item. So when members of our township community retire, they receive the township, the obligatory Township Watch, which is one of those things that I never really understood, not about the township, but in general. You know, you get a watch when you retire. So when time becomes less important, you get a watch to keep time. I don't get it. But John, here's the Springfield Township Watch. Again, you heard what it does. Before your feedback, I'd like to acknowledge Representative Carter, who has a resolution from the state.
Thank you very much. And again, thank you Commissioners, and thank you, John. Tonight's a night that again gives me the greatest pleasure, and it's my pleasure to be here, to be able to honor John as well, with a citation from the House of Representatives in Harrisburg. And I won't read it because it's very similar to the resolution that was just unanimously passed here. But I do want to acknowledge, and again, a couple of different things. Number one, John, as I happened to read through the citation again and looking at this, we both actually started our careers pretty much at the same place in the same time, that at Valley Forge. As a teacher, when I was teaching in Lower Maryan High School, we did an archaeology program during that summer, and John started out there in Valley Forge. And knowing that the students that I had that particular summer, I'm surprised I didn't know John more formally at that particular time. But we did get past that, and here we are, 42 years later. And looking at the reality that where new careers begin, other careers end. But you can go on to other careers too, as well, John. So I want to thank you very, very much for obviously the service that you've given to this community in terms of Springfield, but also for that of Pennsylvania as well. Because your service doesn't stop here at the borders of what happens in Springfield. It covers all of us, and we know that so well. And we know that the job of any police officer today, just like it was back then, is not an easy job. And we appreciate everything that you've done to help every citizen here in Springfield. And I can't wish you more happiness than you can possibly imagine, you and your family, in your coming retirement. And I'm sure that since, I think it's been 11 years since your dear wife retired, you know, she's been waiting long enough, you know, to get you home, to do all the chores that she has lined up after these 11 years. So again, thank you very much, John, for your service, and again, we look forward to seeing you in the future as well.
Thank you very much.
So now we move from a person who's spent since 1992 trying to keep us to slow down to someone who does just the opposite. Well, Elizabeth Maxwell, please come down and bring your trophy. You can put it up right in front of your dad. We're gonna embarrass you. So you can kind of look at the camera, and then I'll read what I have to read here. On Thursday, July 4, Elizabeth Maxwell competed in the local Soapbox Derby Race in Conshohocken, Pennsylvania. This was Elizabeth's eighth year competing in the race, and she was racing in the super stock division this year. Super stock cars weigh 240 pounds and can travel in excess of 25 miles per hour. Elizabeth faced a field of 16 competitors, which included three champions. In previous race years, Elizabeth has placed third on three occasions and second in the stock division. When she placed second, she lost by an astonishing thousandth of a second. However, after a long, hot day this past Thursday, Elizabeth went undefeated to earn her very first championship. On Saturday, July 20, Elizabeth will compete in the 82nd First Energy All-American Soapbox Derby at Derby Downs in her grandfather's hometown of Akron, Ohio. More than 400 youngsters from throughout the United States, Canada, and Japan, between the ages of 7 and 20, will represent their home communities in the championship. Elizabeth is excited and looking forward to representing Springfield Township at the World Championships, and let's give her a hand. Now that we've thoroughly embarrassed you, would either you or your proud father like to say anything?
Go ahead.
No, Mr. President, thank you for acknowledging Elizabeth. It is quite a feat with what the children have to go through to get to this point in derby racing. The local derby races are the hardest race to win to get to Akron, Ohio. Most of the kids that race in that division are pretty vanilla, and mostly are their first times. And it takes a while to get to that point. A lot of the avid racers spend pretty much every weekend throughout the year for 12 months racing up and down the East Coast, and doing that to earn your ticket to Akron, it could be quite an expensive hobby. So eight years ago, she had a goal. It went from having fun to I could win this, and she became competitive. And each year, she gradually got closer and closer and closer, and this year, she finally put it all together in one single day. So it's actually a bigger event for our family, because as you stated in your acknowledgement of Elizabeth, that her grandfather is from Akron, Ohio. So it's going to be quite the trip Saturday to go back to my father's hometown and meet up with our relatives that are waiting for Elizabeth to arrive. So congratulations to Elizabeth, and thank you.
All right. Good luck. Now, we're almost ready for the public comment. I just want to acknowledge one more thing. In the last meeting, we said goodbye to Township Manager John Berger, and we named Mike Taylor our new Township Manager, Mike who's been here for decades and always is in the back. He's the guy I'm texting in the back when I need to find something out. So he is now sitting on my right, and I want to welcome him to the front. Brandon Ford is our new assistant manager.
All right. Brandon.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to the first public comment. The Board is now open to comments or questions from the public. Please be advised that once the committee reports begin, the Board can no longer accept questions from the floor. At the conclusion of the committee reports, public comments will once again be accepted. However, official action on those issues listed on the agenda will already take place. One comment, because I know a lot of you are here for Hoss Lane. We had... Why don't we let the law enforcement people clear the room? Well, I don't know. Yeah, John was always the one who did it.
Corporal Gross was the one that took the pictures. Yeah, that's right.
And that'll get many seats for the rest of you, I hope.
Hey Joe, how you doing?
Still watching.
We'll honor you again. Come on out.
Hey Ben.
Pretty good.
We have a dozen or so seats here begging if you want to move in.
Give me a favor. Take the cardboard box and the lid for the watch and give it to John, please. Thank you.
Okay, moving forward. We had a great discussion on Monday night, and I want to assure you that you were heard loud and clear by the Board, as I think you'll see later on. We encourage you to put your comments on the record. We would discourage redundant comments, and we would discourage longer comments, because we do want to keep moving. And again, I think we heard you. This is televised, so it's good to get things on the record. I've been asked to lead off with the statement from before, which I think's been actually elaborated on a little bit. So I'm gonna let you start, and come on up to the mic and give your name and address, and you have the floor.
My name is David DiPolo. I live at 302 Suffolk Road. And I'd first like to thank Mr. President and the rest of the Commissioners here for giving us the opportunity to voice our concerns over the proposed age-restricted apartment complex at 380 Hoss Lane. And I'd also like to thank everybody in the community for coming out and being a part of this. What I'd like to do is read what the concerned residents with, in opposition to this proposed plan, have coined as our sort of statement of concern. And we've sort of used this to reach out to the rest of the community that we feel has been sort of unaware of the proposal for 380 Hoss Lane, and sort of just to get the information out there about what's happening as far as variances and the plan as a whole. Since we've started reaching out to the community, we have put out a petition, and in less than a month, we have 800 signatures, almost 800 as of today, in opposition to the plan. So in gaining that opposition, this is sort of the basis for which we are providing information to the community members. So if I can, I'd like to read this in its entirety. So this statement of concern is based solely on the opinion of those residents who have voiced their concerns regarding the proposed property at 380 Hoss Lane, Erdenheim, whom we speak on behalf of this evening. The statements are based on the information provided at MEH's presentation to the public and the video-recorded proceedings of the May council meeting, in which MEH presented their proposal to the Township Commissioners. We, the residents, do not claim to be experts on municipal zoning codes or professional land developers. However, based on the information provided to us thus far, we believe we have legitimate concerns, and we appreciate the Board's thoughtful consideration in hearing. After listening to the details of the proposed plan and the variances requested by MEH, the concerned residents have been left with the impression that this proposal is like trying to fit a square peg into a round hole. Simply put, the size of the proposed development just does not fit the location. The opinion that the property is being overdeveloped is based on two of MEH's requested variances. The first variance is that constructing a residential property on an institutionally-zoned track, which would allow the developer to follow the less restrictive zoning requirements of the institutional zone. And the second is to increase the impervious coverage limits. Beyond being granted the variance to build a multifamily apartment building according to the less restrictive institutional zoning would create a significant departure from the code developed for the proposed building type. So the following points I'm gonna address attempt to quantify the differences between what is being proposed versus what would be permitted based on residential zoning requirements. The multifamily apartment zoning code requires a minimum of a 10-acre plot of land to develop. The current plot is 4.7 acres. The multifamily apartment zoning code limits the property to 12 units per acre, or 56 units in this case, the developers proposing 100 units. The multifamily apartment zoning code limits impervious coverage to 20% of the total acreage, 54%. So in gaining that opposition, this is sort of the basis for which we are providing information to the community members. So if I can, I'd like to read this in its entirety. So this statement of concern is based solely on the opinion of those residents who have voiced their concerns regarding the proposed property at 380 Hawes Lane, Erdenheim, whom we speak on behalf of this evening. The statements are based on the information provided at MEH's presentation to the public and the video-recorded proceedings of the May council meeting, in which MEH presented their proposal to the Township Commissioners. We, the residents, do not claim to be experts on municipal zoning codes or professional land developers. However, based on the information provided to us thus far, we believe we have legitimate concerns, and we appreciate the Board's thoughtful consideration in hearing. After listening to the details of the proposed plan and the variances requested by MEH, the concerned residents have been left with the impression that this proposal is like trying to fit a square peg into a round hole. Simply put, the size of the proposed development just does not fit the location. The opinion that the property is being overdeveloped is based on two of MEH's requested variances. The first variance is that constructing a residential property on an institutionally-zoned track, which would allow the developer to follow the less restrictive zoning requirements of the institutional zone. And the second is to increase the impervious coverage limits. Beyond being granted the variance to build a multifamily apartment building according to the less restrictive institutional zoning would create a significant departure from the code developed for the proposed building type. So the following points I'm going to address attempt to quantify the differences between what is being proposed versus what would be permitted based on residential zoning requirements. The multifamily apartment zoning code requires a minimum of a 10-acre plot of land to develop. The current plot is 4.7 acres. The multifamily apartment zoning code limits the property to 12 units per acre, or 56 units in this case, the developers proposing 100 units. The multifamily apartment zoning code limits impervious coverage to 20% of the total acreage. 54% is being proposed under the current plan. Essentially, if this plot of land was zoned for multifamily apartments, the variances that would be required to accommodate the proposed plan would be so far beyond the code limitations that it's hard to believe the Board of Commissioners and the zoning board would even consider such an approval. A primary objective of the residential and multifamily apartment zoning requirements and the Township's comprehensive plan, as we understand them, is to preserve the natural features of the existing property and to maintain the character of the existing neighborhoods. A building of this size on a 4.7-acre plot with minimal setback and impervious coverage beyond limits certainly does not meet the intent of these zoning requirements or the comprehensive plan. I invite you to really think about having a four-story building looming over our neighborhood, a neighborhood that many of us chose because of its environmental aesthetics. The institutional impervious coverage limit is 40%. The current variance is requesting 54%, which is a 35% increase of impervious coverage or 14 percentage point change. This is a significant change, not only because it allows for a larger building to be constructed, but also eliminates a large percentage of mature trees and green space by substituting them with asphalt in a large retention basin to contain the runoff from the increase in impervious coverage. Plans show this larger retention basin located at the front of the property, adjacent to Hawes Lane and visible to neighboring houses, who now look at 4.7 acres, of which approximately 50% is tree-covered. Again, we ask, how does this maintain the character of the existing neighborhoods? At the May Board of Commissioners meeting, MEH presented five benefits of their proposed plan, which we find unsubstantiated and easily refuted with facts. The benefits as presented are least impactful use on traffic patterns, school parking access, no impact to schools, tax benefits, and operator and management company. I'm going to briefly discuss each one of those proposed benefits. First is the least impactful use on traffic patterns. The term "least impactful" suggests that out of all of the possible permitted uses, the proposed plan has the least impact on current traffic patterns. Many believe the previously-approved assisted living plan is much less impactful than the current proposal. This proposal has a 67% increase in parking spaces, which indicates the expectation of more cars, and more cars means more traffic. Considering a large percentage of 55-plus residents are actively working, it is reasonable to expect that they will be commuting at approximately the same time schools beginning or school or sporting events are ending. This would have an arguably worse effect than shift changes and occasional emergency vehicles and an assisted living facility. For comparison, the 100-unit Harston Hall facility employs 70 full-time workers in total, spread across three different shifts. 46% of those ride, share, or use public transportation, creating minimal traffic impact. Additionally, with an increase in rush-hour traffic on the already congested Hawes Lane, commuters will be surely looking for alternative routes via side streets to avoid the traffic. This is in direct conflict with the institutional requirements which state, and I quote, "existing residential traffic shall not be infringed upon by significant volumes of traffic from the proposed facility." Without a comprehensive traffic study plan prior to any approval, assumptions regarding traffic benefits of the current plan are conjecture. School parking access. Code requires two parking spaces per unit, so in this case of the proposed plan, that's 200 parking spaces. The developer is seeking a variance to reduce the off-street parking to 167 parking spots. Given this variance, it's hard to believe that there would be sufficient parking for residents and their guests, let alone overparking for school events. It appears MEH's own variance request is contradicting their proposed benefit. No impact of schools. This benefit actually seems to be more applicable to the assisted living facility than to the proposed 55-plus development. Many 55-plus residents are actively working and could have school-aged children. Also, if all of the units are not filled by 55-plus residents, law permits that a percentage of the remaining units could be filled by families that don't meet the 55-plus restriction, resulting in additional children attending our schools. Most importantly, the increased traffic will have an impact on the safety of the hundreds of kids commuting to and from school each day. Clearly, this proposed plan would have a significant impact on the schools. Additional tax revenue. As far as additional tax revenue in our township is concerned, approximately 75% of the property taxes goes to schools. The remaining 25% goes to the township. Springfield Township is in the top three schools in the, top three in the district in the state for a budget surplus with over $24 million. This begs the question regarding the need to generate increased tax revenue for schools. While increased tax revenue may appear beneficial to the township, the proposed plan would place additional strain on existing roadways, township resources, and existing flood issues, potentially offsetting the benefit of any additional tax revenue. We believe it is also important to address one more advertised benefit, meeting the need for age-restricted living that does not exist in this township. As far as the need for 55-plus apartment housing is concerned, we do not disagree that a need may be present, although an assessment of such need remains unconfirmed. Reflecting on the scale of the proposed plan, however, we question how much of a need there actually is. With college tuition rising to astronomical highs and parents starting their families later in life, most people ages 55 to 65 are still working and are not yet downsizing to apartment living. What we have also seen in many of our neighborhoods is elderly persons living their whole lives in their homes, and this is not because they don't have options for retirement communities or assisted living or age-restricted housing, it's plainly just because they don't want to leave. So this calls into question whether or not the actual need for our community's 55-plus population constitutes the need for 100 units. Residents are curious, how will these be filled if the demand is not present or diminishes over time? And in the event changes of building management occur, will the intended use of the building shift from what was used to get the variances accepted initially? Impact on infrastructure is also a significant constituent concern when considering a building of this magnitude. Beyond the obvious necessity for a traffic study discussed at previous Town Hall meetings, we strongly urge comprehensive studies of the following impacts on the infrastructure to be required prior to plan approval. Impact of increased traffic on the safety of the schoolchildren going to and from the school, which includes the need for additional traffic signals, stop signs, and crossing guards. Impact on increased demands of the police department, considering 200 additional residents. Impact on the already-stressed electrical power grids. Impact on the sewage and drainage systems to handle 100-plus toilets, sinks, showers, and washing machines from the residents. An impact on the fire companies with increased demand on firefighters, additional hydrants, and adequate water supply. If these studies are not completed with sufficient detail, the township is potentially accepting significant risk. If any infrastructure-related issues develops after the property has been approved by the township and construction is complete, does the township bear the costs of potential million-dollar repair expenditures? We are aware that studies are costly and time-consuming, as is the engineering and construction required to adequately address the increased demands on existing utilities, but Springfield Township residents deserve nothing less. As outlined above, our main concerns are, first and foremost, the safety of the hundreds of children who live, play, and attend school in the immediate neighborhood. Secondly, the increased demands placed on our infrastructure, our already-aging infrastructure. Thirdly, the compromised environmental aesthetics and the integrity of our existing neighborhood. And lastly, ensuring that legal processes and best practices are followed stringently by the developers and the contractors. The issues expressed by the concerned neighbors deserves paramount consideration, as we will have to literally live with and next to decisions ultimately made by our elected and appointed officials. We understand this is business, but the neighborhood where we live, walk, play in, day in and day out, is our business. We will feel significantly let down if forced to spend our own hard-earned money to obtain legal counsel to support us if you, our elected leaders, choose not to do so. It is our firm belief that if the elected officials embrace the ideal that the expression of the people's will is the ultimate goal, then the constituency will be served properly and beneficially. We are asking our elected officials to be guided by fact-finding research and make informed decisions resulting in a practical solution. We hope after hearing and recognizing the significant community opposition to the proposed plan that you will reconsider and re-propose the motion to send the Board of Commissioners Solicitor in opposition to the zoning meeting. We are hopeful for a mutually beneficial outcome, and sincerely thank you for your time.
Thank you, David, for that excellent and compelling statement. It was very helpful, and we got a version of that Monday night, and certainly we heard it. He covered a lot of the bases, but we are continuing to be open if people have other points to make. We, again, try not to be redundant. So do we have other public comment? Jim?
First of all, I'd like to say to my former colleagues, it was nice seeing everybody the other night. I hope your family, friends, and your families are doing well.
Now, can you give your name and address, sir?
My name is Jim Daley at 307 Penn Oak Road, Flower Town. I think this is the first time I ever gave public comment. I wasn't here last month. Mike and I were over at the graduation, and my son was graduating. It was exchange student?
Yes.
Yeah. And I regret not being here because of Don Berger's last day. I listened to all your comments, and I watched the video. I agree with all of them. And working with Don for 12 years and when I was on zoning board, it was truly, truly a great opportunity for me, and I was very, very privileged. The only thing I want to add to what everybody said, the last meeting was early on of maybe Jeff and Baron and Glenn, remember? There was a big push about 2006 by at least one member of the Board that basically wanted to clean house and start over, bring new personnel in, and I'm glad that we together didn't allow that to happen. And for the next 12 years, I think we all accomplished a lot together for the Township, and Don was obviously, and Mike, a great part of that with the building now where we're at, stormwater management, you name it, we did a lot together, and Don was obviously a great part of that. I'd also like to acknowledge and thank Charlie Carraba for all his work in the Township, and I can't echo any more words than what Commissioner Graham said as far as honoring Charlie, and all the members of the Board, and our new member, Mr. Cobb, I'm sure appreciates all the work that Charlie did for the Township and all his work in public works. I also want to thank and congratulate Mike Taylor on his position. I really deserve it, Mike, and I'm always working with you, and I'm sure Don's work will continue. With respect to the petition that the gentleman just spoke about, and I can't add anything else to what he said, I think the only thing I can add to it is all, I think the folks are asking is for a motion for the Board of Commissioners that we did together back on August 12, 2008. There was a motion by Daley, seconded by Commissioner Pierce, who preceded Mr. Wilson, carried unanimously to authorize the Office of Township Solicitor to attend the meetings of the zoning hearing board, and then the subsequent zoning hearing board meetings related to the application of the traditions of Springfield, and that was in opposition. That's all I think the folks are asking to do. The only reason, I mean, not the only reason, but one of the reasons I got involved in this is because folks from Ward 1, Ward 6, and Ward 4 started calling me, and my response to many of them was, the first thing I said was, you know, you need to speak to your commissioner. And the answer was, we did. At least Mr. Cobb and Nixon Maxwell appeared to be 100% behind this project. And I found that a little bit alarming, given that the nature of this. When we passed this resolution back in 2008, the traditions of Springfield, that zoning, was actually a better legal argument that they complied with the zoning variances, and we still opposed it. This present position in no way, shape, or form fits into that zoning category, as was elegantly described. So I don't understand a mill of laws. And then the other night, sitting here and listening to at least the members that were here before, Commissioner Shum, Commissioner Stanish, Commissioner Harbison, have some institutional knowledge of what we did before with this property. The new Commissioners, I don't understand how the old conditions weren't looked at, the previous variances on the property were looked at, to get a better feel for what you guys were looking at. And it's a little bit alarming to me. Mr. Cobb is a liaison to the zoning board. How I used to do zoning board, I'm not here to reminisce or sour or not, but every month when we had our workshop, wherever that zoning application district sat, I would turn around and say to them, say, Pete, say, it's Pete, Pete's. Pete, this is in your district. What do you think? What do you want to do with this? And if Pete said, I want to oppose this, then it's incumbent upon you to back that. It's incumbent upon you to, at least, to me as a zoning liaison, say, let's take a look, let's see what it is. At least, the very least, which I can understand, is that you guys don't even want to send the Solicitor to make a record. You don't want a zoning change. You turn the applicant down for a zoning change. So to me, you should follow through with that because you're basically just acquiescing if the zoning hearing board gives them the variances they request. And it means a lot to the zoning hearing board if the Board of Commissioners is in opposition to, or at least that the Solicitor's there to make a record. Things come up in zoning that you're not aware of. Can I ask any of the Board members how big are the parking spaces that the applicant is applying for? Because what's going to happen in zoning, and I may be wrong, but what's happened before in zoning is, well, we really wanted 9 by 18 instead of 10 by 20, and tried to amend it to the zoning hearing board. Well, that creates more impervious surface, and it's an amendment where none of these folks are privy to that. Now, again, I might be wrong, but they're the type of things that pop up, and I would like to have the Solicitor here to do it. I understand the applicant has done a lot of good work in the community. I, of course, am friendly with them, but we've had to tell our friends no before. We've had applications on Stanton Avenue, where a real estate person here, we had to tell them no. We had to send a Solicitor. We had Wawa. You remember Wawa, over there on Sunnybrook? Some of those folks, Wawa was a great person, great folks to work with, but it was too intense for that site. We even opposed a zoning petition over in McBeal, going to East Valley Green Road, because they thought, we thought the institution was going to come out to the street where the residential was. They eventually put solar pounds, but we sent our Solicitor to oppose that in white march. And once they heard we sent our Solicitor there, they backed off, or at least it can bring them to the table to negotiate. So I don't understand the pure acquiescence to this. What I'm not worried about is what the zoning hearing board's going to do. I'm pretty confident in our zoning hearing board. Now, can't prejudge, but it only takes two votes. There's a new member on the Board who I'm not familiar with. He seems like a very nice gentleman. He's the alternate. He could step in. I don't know what his judicial philosophy is. So this could very well get past zoning, but if it doesn't, for, Mike, how much is it to apply for zoning now?
500.
500 bucks. So the applicant puts in 500 bucks for the chance to build a 100-unit, that's a pretty good gamble. And if they lose at zoning, they can appeal to the Common Pleas Court. We get the Common Pleas Court, you don't know what's going to happen. You could get a judge, it could be very sympathetic, and judges don't like zoning. That might sit there for a couple of years, who knows? But again, I guess the last thing I would say is, you know, again, the applicant is very friendly, and we're familiar with them, and they've got a lot of zoning relief for many of the projects, and they've done great work. And I'm sure I'm not making friends here. I'm sure some of the investors that are there, I probably know, but sometimes you have to tell your friends no, and that's leadership to me. And I've made a lot of... And I've made a lot of... And I guarantee you, there's a lot of neighbors that are still not happy because I'd make a decision no. Sometimes you have to tell constituents no, sometimes you have to tell developers no. And it's what's best for the community. My kids go to Erdenheim, so I hear everything everybody's saying. I have plenty of friends that are back there in Ward 1 and Ward 4, so. The last thing I'll say, and again, I hope the board changes their mind, at least two of you, if the community can shake two of you loose to change your mind. I'm not a betting man and I'm not good at 50/50s, so what I've decided to do, and I'm sure my wife's going to kill me, I'm asking the zoning hearing board, I'm requesting to be granted party status. So, at the zoning hearing board, and if I give this to Mike, if you give this to Rob Dunlop, I made up my own form, I can fill theirs out at the time, because that way you're insured to have somebody that in case this thing is down at the zoning hearing board, if the Board of Commissioners decides not to send the solicitor, you have somebody that can at least be a placeholder to bring it to the Common Pleas Court. So, with that, I thank the Board of Commissioners and I wish you would change your minds. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any further public comment at this point? Going once? Oh, wait, there are two. You'll get your chance.
My name's Zach Giuseppe, G.I.U.S.E.P.P.E., Crany, C.R.A.N.E.Y., hyphen Monticelli, M.O.N.T.I.C.E.L.L.I. Now, huzzah, Mr. Daly, fabulous speech. With the facts I've heard, I would have to object to having this zoning happen, you know. I think quite frankly, what we have at risk here, if there is dare a fire there, you have so many cars in there, you have so many people, how do you go get those people out? How? There's no possible way. But quite frankly, even with the speech I heard, I neither oppose or support it. I'm quite frankly in the middle, but you have to really think about the facts and you have to get at least an esquire at the zoning hearing board to say on the record of what the township's position is on this certain matter. You have to. Otherwise, you know, it becomes a lose. And also, Mr. Daly mentioned that this can go to the Common Pleas Court if the zoning hearing board objects this going forward. You have to be there, you have to participate in government, you have to be in that courtroom when this, if this does get appealed for judicial review, you have to be there. Quite frankly, this is not, this is not as bad as Section 8. I have to deal with three Section 8 houses, all within a mile of my house. That is much more worse than this. So, you have to take up what you have. My second thing I'm going to have to comment on is promotion of sergeant and corporal. Do we know who those officers are that could be promoted? Mike?
Have we released that, or does that come out when we?
It's going to be in your motion.
Yeah.
It's going to be in the motion, but you aren't going to tell us now?
Well, we can tell them, can't we?
Sure.
What are the?
Chris Wilber for sergeant and Mark Konig for corporal.
Okay, I can't speak about Konig, but I can speak about Mr. Wilber. He is a fantastic officer here, corporal. I have had many interactions with him and I think that would be appropriately just for his promotion. My third one here is, what's this Police Civil Service Commission? Is this by, is this the police secretary?
The Police Civil Service Commission, and I've never been to a meeting, so correct me if I'm wrong, when we're hiring new police, there's a very rigid process that they go through with written tests and oral tests and...
The civil service test.
Right. And their job is to make sure the process was done properly and then the top three candidates get presented to us in rank order, although they're not, I don't believe, doing the analysis.
No.
They're supervising.
They just certify that the process is done.
Right. So, their job is to certify that the process was done correctly.
Okay. That would be all. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Do we have any other pub... Come on down. We'll get to you, Richard, I promise.
Stephanie Kerr, 415 Norfolk Road. So, thank you, Mr. Daly, Commissioners, for hearing us tonight. I know Katie and her team have worked really hard on putting all this together for the opposition and the statement of concern for the residents. I'm with them. I am one of the residents opposed to that. I live across the street from Erdenheim and my biggest concern, along with others, I know is stormwater is a big issue. And I think that, especially in this instance where we have something that's supposed to be institutional and it's going to be residential, one of the statements that they had talked about was the fact that there's 100 more toilets, 100 more sewers. Our street flooded pretty significantly after Sandy, after Erdenheim was built. There was a study done. It was a great study. It proved many things. It didn't help my street from flooding. It didn't help many residents on our street from losing their belongings because the street flooded. They had to modify our street, they had to add inlets, and I think one of the larger concerns is that this is now such a big piece of property that will be impacted by stormwater. It won't just be coming down Wedgewood, it'll be coming down Preston, it'll be coming down other avenues. And I think that's one of my largest concerns. Studies are great, but they just don't, they just don't show real life and what happens in the real world sometimes. So, I think that it's important that we note as well that any variance that's asked for, that there be appropriate follow-ups, that if it's a traffic issue and it's a traffic variance, that there's a traffic study that's attached to it. I think as was discussed on Monday, there are, I think there were seven variances or 11 variances that exist already for traditions that were approved in order to get that building and that project approved. So, I think there needs to be an opposition in attendance there to make sure that those variances are addressed in addition to the variances that I'm asking for. One of my other concerns is, I would love to know who the investors are for MEH, for this project. Whether that's possible or not, I don't know. I'm sure it's in an application somewhere or that somebody has that information, but...
Well, we don't, we don't have that information. It's not, we're not entitled to that information.
Are they required at any point in time to divulge who those investors are?
Not to tell us.
That's fine.
Okay.
Just curious, as I'm sure other people are as well. And one of my other issues related to stormwater is, I think there was someone here on Monday, an engineer for the watershed, maybe?
The township engineer was here.
Okay. So, has there been any conversations with the Conservation District in relation to stormwater? Like, how that will affect that?
There will be, if the project moves forward, there would be.
Okay, so only, so we would only know that once it moves forward?
Well, by law, it has to improve upon the situation. That doesn't mean that everyone ends up doing that, but they are, by law, anything you do over 200 square feet of disturbance has to end up being a net gain.
Okay.
So, that, again, that doesn't always work that way, but that is your comfort, is that the law, no one's allowed to make it worse.
Okay. And then my last comment, information that, in doing my research on MEH, I didn't come into this blindly, I didn't come into this ill-prepared, I think it's important to know who's doing business in our township. I think it's important to know who they are. I agree that they've done really nice things in our township. I love that they are rooted in community, they generally tend to use a local architect. It's great. I love that. In this case, I would think that they would take our information and use that to help them make a decision in this moving forward as well. That being said, they have another project that is in development. One of those projects is not in Springfield, it's in Philadelphia. That lot that has been developed sat for eight months, half-built. I think that is important to take into consideration in our township. We live in a very residential area. I do not personally want to drive down Hoss Lane and for eight months look at a half-built building that is 100 units. Are there, will there be anything put in place to prevent that from happening, to move it forward? I understand their requirements, zoning, whatever, I get that, there's always going to be issues, but I think that's a concern as well and another reason that we should go in opposition of that. That's something to take into consideration.
Great. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Richard Metz, 910 Bent Lane. I'm speaking against the proposal to the granting of variances for this development. In this proposed plan, about 1.5 acres in the back is a large wooded area. This would majorly be impacted by a parking lot. Most of the woods would be destroyed. Springfield has very few woods left, so I wanted to address the problem of overdevelopment that has been critical in our area. There may be a shortage of affordable housing, but there are many ways to address and manage housing without destroying the limited amount of open space that we have left. Cutting down large shade trees is not the way to go. Trees give us oxygen, shade, wildlife habitat, wind barriers, sound barriers, and flood control. Open space and natural areas have been shown to contribute to our physical and mental health, stress reduction, general well-being. Scientists have finally stressed that planting millions of trees would be a most effective counter to climate change. Why are we not doing all that we can to project and mature trees in our community? It's time for us to wake up and address these effects right here in our community. Let's be creative and do the right thing before it's too late. Let's consider ways to protect this space for our well-being and for future generations, for the humans and all the plants and animals who share this. If these variances are denied and the applicant withdraws, there's nothing to prevent the township from purchasing this land for a park for our community with help from funds from the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources. They could also be working with the Natural Lands Trust. This is what, this would benefit our community the most. Thank you.
Any more? Yes. We'll come across. Okay.
My name is Ellen Stevenson. I live at 18 Rose Lane in Flower Town. And I'm here to ask that, along with the studies that have been requested, that the board consider doing a full environmental impact study of the kind of development that's being proposed. With global warming and the kind of weather that we're experiencing, we cannot put our heads in the sand and just continue business as usual. Density brings with it, as you know, added pollution, noise, traffic. Anyway, I'm asking not only that a study be done for this project, but that in the future, the board put the environmental impact of projects that are proposed always at the top of the list because the earth is in trouble. Thank you.
Thank you. In the back, yeah. There's a guy behind you now. But we'll get to everybody. And I want to thank you for not being redundant because each one is bringing up new items and that's great.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name's Bob Boland. I live at 34 Hoss Lane and we moved to Flower Town two years ago from miscellaneous information, but from St. Louis because my mom, my wife wanted to move back to her family and was so very happy to have found a home here in the Flower Town community. Part of the activity that we did is we purchased a colonial house on Hoss Lane and we gutted it and we added a, we added additional structure in the back with, for laundry room and a breakfast room and such. And one of the things that we had to do to do that was comply with the Springfield Township's stormwater regulations. And what we found, we were required by our permit to construct a retention basin based, you know, on the square footage of a new hard surface we had. And what we found when we dug this big hole is that the water wouldn't go anywhere because of the underlying clay in our facility. And we ended up building a rainfall garden ultimately, but we had to get approval from your building people to do that. And certainly, we're on higher ground here than we are down at 34 Hoss Lane, but if, at least on my experience, is well worth an engineering study, a geological study, a groundwater study, to determine whether a retention basin and infiltration basin will even operate correctly in this area. So, suggestion there. The other is just a concern about using institutional zoning for a multifamily residential district, which is entirely a different type of land use than is the institutional and really natural area that it is now. One of the interesting things that we discovered after buying our house is that we back up to a multifamily apartment and condo community called Penn's Wood. And it's a beautiful place. It's well infitting with the character of the neighborhood, but it has 51, by my count, approximately 51 living units and they're located on, excuse me, they're located on 45 acres. So, they have half, they have half the density here with 10 times the acreage. And that allows them to have adequate parking, it allows them to have two-story buildings in four. You drive down, I guess it's called Penn's Wood Lane and into that development and it's gorgeous. It's, it well, well meets the character of the residential neighborhood here. And one of the reasons we moved here, one of the reasons we moved to Flower Town, and one of the reasons why we bought a house on the relatively busy street of Hoss Lane is because this is a beautiful neighborhood and I'd like to keep that beautiful neighborhood residential character in place. And the proposed, the proposed unit will not do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I got one more.
My name is Michael Grotheusen. I live on 909 Fraser Road. I wanted to thank the... It's well researched and I want to second Richard Metz's well-researched comments about possibly exploring. I hadn't thought of that and he's, you know, he had his notes and he's more prepared. I wanted to add and hopefully maybe a little bit piggybacking on some things that have come but maybe haven't been articulated well, is I'm opposed to the initial drawing of it that I saw at the meeting that was over at the Flower Town Country Club on aesthetic grounds. And a couple of people tonight have used the word beauty. If you want to get a visualization, if you haven't seen the first architect's rendering of what the thing looks like, alls you have to do is go to the corner of Flower Town Road and I believe that's Butler Pike. The visual message, and again, I'm not a person who is reflexively against growth, development, business, people running businesses, capitalism in general. But the, I mean, these guys are out to make some money, fine, fair and square. I, you know, more power to them. But aesthetically, the drawing that I saw, and then if I do go to the corner of Flower Town and Butler Pike, they're very, very similar. And to me, it's the language of unregulated growth and trying to get the maximum amount of money for investors. So it looks like, kind of what it looks like when you go to the shore to Rehoboth or Hilton Head or Myrtle Beach or something is, that was the takeaway. The second point I'm making will be my last one is the drawing that we saw that night at the country club with the stormwater runoff had the retention pond, just like Erdeneheim Elementary. It's kind of in the corner on Hoss Lane. I don't personally find those visually terribly attractive. I'm not a scientist, but they seem like mosquito breeding grounds to me. I'm not sure, but it was almost identical to the one on Erdeneheim Elementary. So if you want to get an idea of what it might look like, just go to the corner of Erdeneheim Elementary, right where it's 309. And there's a kind of split rail fence and then there's like a, we all know what they look like, I guess, but they seem like mosquito pits to me. So, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Paul Bowles, 1413 Church Road. I've lived there since 2001, familiar with the traffic aspects of Church and Hoss. I've had three cars on my lawn in those 18 years, I guess. The first thing, is a traffic study is not required by, to get zoning approved for this project?
The project's not even allowed to go forward to that point yet.
But is that a stipulation that you can move forward with? That would be required?
I don't believe it would be required if it's being offered.
And the clay geologic study was also a very good point because we're all familiar with.
That would be, that would be.
That would have to be. And the Montgomery County Conservation District would take care of that, I would assume. Or the DEP, or they defer to one another.
And our township engineer, yes.
I just think, yeah, it's, you're shoe-horning and I actually did bring a copy of the original plan. This is preliminary, but from what I heard before, you're putting pretty much a square pegging around home. Safety firemen coming in, you're going to shake off with 200 parking spaces to 167. If there is an emergency per se, there's going to be issues there. There's also the proximity of Erdeneheim events, rush hour, morning rush hour, as we all know, is, I've seen cars back from my house, well up over the hill, back to and past Erdeneheim, some events. I just wish you could reconsider or some of the things you have here. The impervious coverage, 14% over what's applicable to the area. The parking's one thing. The acreage used to be two properties, you're now making it one, I guess as a consolidation plan? Has that been set forth? Is it two addresses? Okay. So I would beg of you to consider the safety of the children. I've been living at Church and Hoss, I've seen some things go on, kids do cross there, bikes do cross there. Are we getting a signal? I've had three cars on my lawn in these 18 years and I just, I've been begging township, the old police chief, Glenn, I've had you something, comments or emails about the safety of Church and Hoss. And to tell you what studies say, I have traffic counts from DVRPC, which is a well-respected organization. It actually shows between 2006 and 2017 that traffic on Church Road has decreased by 4,000 cars per day. The question is, are they just waiting in line to get to the turnpike? As I have, some days I can't get out of my driveway because they're lined up the paper mill trying to get on 309 to get towards the turnpike if anything happens. And I would just beg of you to consider looking more into this plan as you go forward and require the geologic, the traffic, and safety studies to go hand-in-hand with this development. And maybe MEH is going to shoot for the stars now and then back down with what they ask for. Now, the variance will go up to 190 cars, we'll say, for the property. And again, the changing of the parking space size, nine-by-18s to eight-by-16s, you fit more cars on a smaller area, you're still paving it off. And there is going to be runoff and the clay and the retention basin at during Hoss. I just would hope that the commissioners and all you just think one more time about before shoe-horning this amongst us all because it's been, I can only tell you some of the things that happened at Church and Hoss at all hours of the day.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Yes.
Thank you very much for your time.
Hi. My name's David Facheck of 203 Suffolk Road in Flower Town. I'm with the opposition on this. I wanted to put myself in front of the commissioners tonight because I penned an impassioned email to you. I wanted to give you the chance to see me and know that I wasn't just hiding behind a keyboard, getting a message across to you that I feel very strongly about.
Thank you.
I think that your heart's in the right place in trying to develop Springfield, but I think you guys should think about taking back Springfield somewhat and think about how we can innovate Springfield and make Springfield a local example of what Ambler wants to be and what Glenside wants to be and what Doylestown is and some of our other Bucks County neighbors are. They're thinking about the future, okay? We've consumed so much of this area and you can look at it from the northeast of Philadelphia down to the city, decisions are made, infrastructure is failed to be addressed, and then we wind up coming back and addressing it later down the road. We've got a boatload of problems here with water, traffic, that's all obvious, and that is redundant. You've heard it all night, but it's true. So, you know, putting 100 units into a place that they don't belong is just going to exasperate the problem even more. And I just wanted to be heard.
Right.
The rest of the opposition.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
48 Baskin, 419 Hoss Lane. I actually live right across the street from Erdeneheim Elementary School. I look at that retention pond every day. I'd like to piggyback off to the gentleman that just went recently. I did write something because I do like to talk and I don't want to talk any longer than I really need to. One of my remarks is in regard to the stormwater runoff. There is a stormwater runoff problem on Hoss Lane. Concerns about this were brought to the township's attention back in 2013 when the comprehensive township-wide stormwater management analysis was done. Since there were bigger concerns at the time, like Hemlock Road, we all know about Hemlock Road, since there were bigger concerns at the time, I don't think any of those stormwater runoff issues were remedied. I don't know that for a fact, but I do live on Hoss Lane. And I do know that when it rains, it pours on Hoss Lane. Water runs down Hoss Lane like a river and it doesn't stop at my driveway, it runs down my driveway. It runs into my backyard and floods my backyard. And this has gotten worse over the years. It got the worst when the school was built, which I'm sure has something to do with the retention pond and all that other good stuff. But most recently, I don't know if you remember, a few weeks ago, we had a pretty bad thunderstorm. It was in the middle of the night. 4:30 in the morning, I look out my window and Hoss Lane's completely flooded across. Now, my husband and I, maybe the couple drivers that went through the water know about it, probably no one else does. There was water from curb to curb underneath the 309 overpass, six inches deep. I went out. It was past my ankles. Cars were flying through there, not realizing it was as deep as it was. There is a problem with stormwater on Hoss Lane. And something like a monstrosity that is being proposed is going to only make it worse. Second thing is, I think they read, he read in his statement about the traffic on Hoss Lane, and he said that, he quoted, and I'm going to quote again because I researched it as well. Residential traffic should not be infringed upon by significant volumes of traffic from a proposed facility in an institutional zone. So let's stick with that for a second. We've got the legitimate concern brought to you by the concerned citizens, the safety of the children who use Hoss Lane. Given the increased traffic that's, with this proposed development, how can we keep our children safe? Let's say this happens. Let's say this 55-plus building does increase traffic. Let's say it goes through, it's built, it increases traffic. Should the township and the zoning board be concerned about potential lawsuits for deliberate indifference? We are making you aware that there is the great potential that if all of these cars are now traveling up and down Hoss Lane, our children are at risk. We're making you aware of that. And the zoning board's going to hear of our concerns as well. So God forbid, something does happen to one of our children on Hoss Lane. We know that we've informed you of this possible risk and the zoning board's going to be informed of the possible risk. Should we be concerned that the township could be sued for deliberate indifference in this matter?
Okay, thank you.
Is that possible?
We don't need to give legal opinions at this point, but everything is relevant. Thank you and.
Is that a possibility? Could that happen?
This is public comment, this isn't a press conference.
I'm asking the solicitor.
No, but this is public comment, not a press conference. We don't have to go back and forth, we don't have to research.
You answer other questions from people who are standing right here.
That's true. You should at least answer her.
Do you have something you want to say on this?
I don't think that's.
Please, order please in the building, we do not need you in the back to comment on this. I will ask the solicitor. I also want to remind you people, because I have a feeling this is going to go on really long, that the tape that goes on TV is two hours long and if we go past it, you will not hear what we do. And that won't get out there. So I think if you want us to be held accountable, you might want to think about the, you don't have to. It doesn't matter, we'll be here all night, we will entertain. I'm not threatening you. I think that's, from what we've been hearing, you want the public to hear. And at 9:30, they won't hear it the way it works. So I don't mean that in an adversarial sense, I mean that as a tactical sense. And I again, would encourage you not to be redundant for that purpose. We do want to hear everything. As I said, I think we heard you before. We're not as intransigent as we keep being accused of being, I think. Do you want to address that?
Do you want me to?
Yeah, go ahead.
No, that's not a concern, not even a little bit, because this situation could happen under any circumstances and it could happen, God forbid, even if this thing is not built. So no, it is of no concern.
But if there's increased traffic due to this building.
There's increased traffic due to one single family.
Suppose it's someone from that building?
Suppose it's you.
Look, please, I want to cut this, this is why I don't think the back and forth is useful. I think he did answer the question and it is relevant to us. And it is your right to say mean things to us, but please let the meeting play out. And if you have something new to say, we'd like to hear it. Bob?
Yes, Bob Gillies, 213 Woods Road. I was here last month about two items. I'll bring up the one that's not related to this first. The Flower Town Country Club. Have you had any discussion with them last month? You said you'd get back to us as opposed to subletting the facility.
Yeah, your question, yes. Your question was they brought in a different manager for the dining room and did that context, did that constitute a subletting of the whole overall lease? And we do not believe it does, so the solicitor looked at it.
Have you looked at it?
Yes.
Okay. But we still get gross receipts for everything that's in the facility?
We're working on clarifying that. It's important that we do, so I think we will.
I'll stick with the country club for a minute or two. That lease is due, complete in four years?
Five or six, but yeah.
Somewhere in that period. Are you starting to look toward the future, do an assessment of the facility and start to get a proposal within the next two years so that we don't have a vacant facility?
Yeah, we're in fact forced to do that because the pool is in dire need of work and we need to figure out whether we're going to do that and how that will be funded and how that all works out.
Well, that could be part of the next proposal.
Exactly, exactly.
That's why I was bringing up the pool shouldn't be a taxpayer issue. All right. Then ironically, reaching, researching this thing, MEH, MEH also has their office at the Flower Town Country Club. I wasn't aware of that. And it says here they have over $20 million worth of acquisitions and development, so if we get gross receipts, that would be a pretty big one. But the whole issue I have with what's going on here, as I said last month, is the process. I think by, the developer came in to look at a property and the property had 11 uses. And if something within those 11 uses, they decided to build, but they needed variances, extra parking or setback change or not so many, more trees removed or something, that's what they go for. They go for the zoning that's there and the variance for that zoning. Then we, as a board, I say we because I was there 16 years, we would, as a board, then would decide, as Jim Daley said, we'd ask Pete, the person at that board, if we would oppose or record or we were okay with it. Okay, nothing, record, most likely, oppose very rarely, but we did. So here, you're taking a use that's not even allowed in the township. There's no zoning in the township for this use. The zoning in this township says you need minimum of 10 acres, as was said earlier. They don't have that. The minimum use was 12 homes per acre. Don't know if you're allowed to subdivide acres into quarters or not because that would be unclear. It could be only 48 units. So now we're doubling that. There is a residential component, which would be one single-family home. So that would be the 12th use of that property. So there's 12 uses for that property as its own that would need variances, that could possibly need variances. But to bring in a 13th use, which isn't even there, should not have been sent to zoning. That should have been the board of commissioners and Mr. Maxwell, in a letter to the residents, I saw on Facebook, that he said they voted to go to zoning. Now, I don't ever remember seeing a vote to go to zoning or hearing of one either. I doubt Mr. Graham and Mr. Wilson voted.
There was no vote.
All right, so if there was no vote, how did it go to zoning? That would have been.
Okay, well, let me answer that question because there's a lot of misinformation. We said no. What they wanted us to do was to write a zoning class just for them. They let them do what they want and we could have negotiated it smaller or greater. And we said no. I personally think, we've done that in the past for developers, I personally think that's illegal spot zoning. And we said no, go to zoning. We don't need to vote for that because we just said, don't bother. They were going to draft a zoning overlay, as it's called for us, and we said no. So that's.
So you were against them.
That's why it went, we didn't tell them to go to zoning. We, although that was discussed, but we don't, we officially say no and anybody can go to zoning with anything. So that was the one route.
Understood.
We did, we understood that they were probably going to go to zoning, so I don't want to say that, but it wasn't a vote.
You were against them changing zoning?
We will vote in a couple of minutes on that if we get the.
Well, you're the board.
We were against creating a new.
So you were against them.
But we didn't vote on it.
But you were against them changing zoning, but you didn't vote.
We were against creating a whole new class of zoning for them, which is what they asked and what we did for the TC property, what we did for the Boers property, what we did for the PZAC property.
Let's go to it now.
We almost did it for the Lloyd property and I really don't like that. I think everybody should go through the process.
Well, now, let's bring them.
And I know we disagree on this.
You brought those up, let's bring those up. How long did TC take to develop?
We will vote in a couple minutes on that, if we get the...
Well, you're the board...
We were against creating a new...
So you were against them...
But we didn't vote on it.
But you were against them changing zoning, but you didn't vote, but you wouldn't vote for it?
We were against creating a whole new class of zoning for them, which is what they asked, and what we did for the TC property, what we did for the Boars property, what we did for the PZAC property.
Let's go to...
We almost did it for the Lloyd property, and I really don't like that. I think everybody should go through the process. And I know we disagree on this.
You brought those up, let's bring those up. How long did TC take to develop?
Bob?
No, no, it's important for everybody to understand, something's wrong here.
The TC, the TC development was approved by the board 15 years ago.
How long did it take for it to develop?
Before I was on the board. I don't know.
It was years, maybe a decade.
They still haven't broken ground on it.
We've been going, when they go to zoning, you'd have dozens of hearings like this. To go to zoning, I mean, to ask for a zoning change, they would have bought a zoning to you. We would have looked at it. It would go into planning. Planning would have had meetings with the public. Public would have had input. Then there would have been comments on the zone. The zone would have come back. We would have said, "No, make some changes." They would have made changes. They would have come back and forth. There would have been years of process. Now, when I looked on their site, they said that they want quick turnaround on their real estate ventures. So they wouldn't have looked at this possibly if it was long zoning. Now, I'm not necessarily for or against the property. I think, obviously, I do think it's way overdeveloped for that piece of property. Whether 55 is there or not, whether it should be 40 units or whatever, that's up to the rest of the body and the board to work on. But I still don't understand. Answer me one more question, if you would, please. If it went to zoning, and I want to compliment the residents for getting together in such a quick manner, especially in the throes of summer, many times, we deferred votes because it was a summer, so kudos to you to get 800 people active that fast. But what if they didn't? And what if it went to zoning, and zoning passed? What did you anticipate to happen? What would have been the process?
We don't have our thumb on the scale. We don't know, we don't know what, when things go to zoning, zoning does their job. Maybe they come out with something that's one-tenth the size, or maybe, and maybe the public rallies behind it. So we're not trying to come in and run the whole thing at that point. We're letting the process go. And if what comes out, we have appealed things that come out of zoning. If we don't like what comes out of zoning, we would appeal it. But I don't have it all planned out, that zoning is going to approve it or not. I kind of have always thought they wouldn't approve this.
But doesn't zoning approve? You were hoping they didn't approve it?
Yes.
Then why didn't you send the solicitor?
Well, if you let us vote, I think you'll find we'll get there.
Okay, well, that's good. Okay. But again, I, the zoning, if I'm correct, and Mr. Cobb, maybe you can answer, if not, maybe Mr. Daley can. If something goes to zoning, it's up or down, right?
No.
It's either approved, approved, or some minor negotiation.
They can approve with all sorts of conditions to get, so what doesn't, it's not an up or down thing. I mean, obviously, there's a decision. If they say no, they say no. And if they say yes, it's with conditions. But it can be a shadow of its former self, or it can be exactly what's asked for.
Well, not to be repetitive, I just think that the board, that the board made a wrong decision by going to zoning. You left, you exposed our flank, and I think that has everybody a little concerned.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that. I don't agree, but I appreciate it.
That you change it, because in the future, I'll do this type of thing again. Thank you.
Okay.
My name is Cecilia Dougherty. I live at 910 Bentley. I didn't want to go there, but since someone mentioned the country club, I have to. Six, 15, 17, 18 years ago, when I found out that the township owned the country club, I was shocked. I just couldn't believe it. I was told, "Oh, it's okay, it's not your tax money, you know, it's privately run." Okay, well then, why is it listed with all the other services? This is just very confusing, and it does not look good. And when it comes up in a situation like this, and it will continue to come up, it looks, it looks bad. It looks like corruption.
Okay, thank you. Do we, do we have any other public comment at this point?
I'd like to thank everybody for letting me have this opportunity. My name's Goan Snyder. I am the present owner of 380 Horse Lane. My father started a project some years ago. Got through all of his commissioner meetings and zoning meetings. After going through years and years of getting all this approved, he turned ill, eventually passed away. Then recently, my mother passed, so now, we have a situation with an estate which we are currently trying to settle. The property has some loans, taxes, things that need to be taken care of, so we can finalize our parents' estates. And the property is going to get sold, whether it be under the agreement we have presently. We had several other people that were interested in purchasing the property. We chose MEH because of them being a local company, and felt for the community, somebody from out of state, out of the community, they could do whatever they wanted within the confinement of the, what's presently there. But, that being said, we have no choice other than to sell this property to whoever wants to purchase it at fair market value. And I just wanted to go on record to state that, and thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Anybody else?
I am Annie Lanick, 518 Curzy Road, Orland. I came here thinking that I didn't like the plan, and you've all confirmed for me that I don't, but thank you everyone for the fabulous research and well-presented information that you had. I really appreciate that as a member of the community, that I live in a community that cares so much. And I hope you, the board, will take into consideration that we had one person, with very good reason, stand up in support of the plan, and everybody else against it. So please, keep that in mind when you're making your decision.
Are we...
In this response to Dawn, I hope that you do sell it, and I hope you sell it to the best person. And, you know, the fact that you were just saying that you didn't want to sell it to out-of-state, because they could do anything they want, that's what MEH is doing.
Can we have your name, please, just for...
BJ Bear. 129 Main Road.
Thank you. Are we ready to move on, at this point?
We do have a point of order.
What?
I apologize. I was asked to read a resident that couldn't be here.
Yeah, can he read the letter during his comment, during the meeting?
Whenever you like.
Why don't you just read it then? Well, you can read it then. Let's move on. We do have one letter, I think it's in support of...
A resident that couldn't attend the...
Go ahead. Why don't you just read it now?
A 55-plus rental is a need that would benefit Springfield taxpayers in order for us to stay in the township, but rent in a new complex with upscale amenities...
It's coming. Why don't you read it for, and I'm going to, oh, no, go ahead, go ahead.
Joan Parsons, 37 Hawkswell Circle. Thank you. New complex with upscale amenities. Many of us over age 55 have our children and grandchildren living in Springfield, and we don't want to leave, but we want to rent within Springfield. On another note, having a nursing home or assisted living complex would only mean more traffic due to the need for 24-hour staff, visitors, 24-hour nurse assistants, activities, 24-hour maintenance, and security tasks, 24-hour personal care, staff, trucks coming in and out with deliveries, memory care, food deliveries, and so on. Assistant living or nursing home will bring in more traffic than a 55-plus rental. Thank you for reading my note, Joan Parsons, 37.
Okay, thank you. And we're moving on to the committee reports now. So if you look at your agenda, we've covered the first three items, and these will go very quickly, because you are the last one, but it shouldn't take more than five or 10 minutes. So, and we'll be fine on that, the deadline that I was worried about. I'll start out as the chairman of the Internal Affairs Committee. The first item is number four, the bill listing. I lost that page. Hold on.
July bill listing.
Oh, there it is. Sorry. I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the June check reconciliation in the amount of $715,072.70 in the July bill listing, and the amount of $390,020.51. That is my motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote. The next item concerns the township pension plans. Due to the retirement of Don Berger last month, TD Ameritrade, administrators of the township's four employee pension plans, has requested a letter designating the new Township Secretary Manager as an authorized signer to issue instructions to the bank in order to discharge its obligations. Therefore, I move that the Board of Commissioners authorize the execution of a letter adding Michael Taylor, Township Secretary and Manager, as a trustee authorized signer for the four pension plans held at TD Ameritrade and removing Donald E. Berger Jr. as an authorized signing. That is my motion. Do we have a second? Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote. That concludes my report. We move to the Chairman of the Public Works and Facilities Committee, Commissioner Shum.
Thank you, I have no report this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Shum. We move to the Chairman of the Community Development Committee, Commissioner Standish.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Standish. Move on to the Chairman of the Cultural and Environmental Resources Committee, Commissioner Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I must have all the reports tonight. I have three. I'll be brief, though. The first one is an ordinance prohibiting bamboo. In response to expressions of concern from residents whose neighbors have taken to cultivating bamboo in their yards, as well as the invasive nature of bamboo, the Board of Commissioners asked the township planning commission to consider regulations to manage bamboo within the township. The planners, with the assistance of the township's engineering office, created an ordinance to manage bamboo. Therefore, I move the Board of Commissioners authorize the advertisement of an ordinance prohibiting the growing or planting of bamboo. That is my motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? What this would do, just specifically, if you wanted to plant new bamboo, it would have to be in a fully bottom inside container, and if you have existing bamboo, you would have to control it, unless it was, I forgot the footage, if it's within something like 15 feet of the public right of way, you'd have to remove it. Creates a duty to control it.
And if it becomes invasive on your neighbors...
Yes.
It could be reported to the township, and the township would then investigate, and there'd be action, action to correct the invasiveness of the bamboo. So just to follow up there, it's the intention of the Board of Commissioners to consider enacting the ordinance at the August 14, 2019, business meeting of the board.
Hold on, Peter.
Yep.
All in favor, please signify by...
Oh, yes.
Saying aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. And that's, we didn't just pass it, we moved it to the next step of advertising it. Go ahead.
My second report is recycling report, and during the month of June 2019, Springfield Township residents recycled 186.64 tons of material with a householder participation rate of 82.2%. The net cost for the month was $19,818.53. My third report is regarding the Whisheken Clean Water Partnership. The Whisheken Clean Water Partnership consists of 12 municipalities and four waste treatment plants, operators, located within the Whisheken Creek watershed. The partnership was created for the purpose of creating a water quality improvement plan that addressed the requirements of the Clean Water Act. As a member of the partnership, Springfield Township shall designate one primary voting representative and one alternative member to serve on the management committee. Commissioner Harbison currently serves as the township's alternative member of the management committee. However, due to other commitments, it is his desire to step down from the position, and Commissioner Standish has agreed to take his place. Therefore, I move that the Board of Commissioners of Springfield Township designated Commissioner Barrett Standish as the township's alternate member of the management committee of the Whisheken Creek Clean Water Partnership. That is my motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
And that concludes my reports, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. We move to the Chairman of the Parks and Recreational Resources Committee, Commissioner Graham.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Graham. Now we move on to the co-chairman of the Public Safety Committee, Commissioner Maxwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have this short novel for this evening, and I'll try to move through it quickly. First item is fireworks display. Move that the Board of Commissioners waive Section 3303 dot 1, subsection 12 of the Springfield Township Fire Prevention Code in order that the North Hills Country Club may conduct a professional fireworks display on Sunday evening, September 1, 2019, at approximately 8:15 PM, as part of the club's annual Labor Day celebration. The approval is conditioned upon the following. One, the pyrotechnical firm and North Hills Country Club shall add Springfield Township as an additional insured, when there are certificates of insurance for the event. And two, the pyrotechnical firm and the North Hills Country Club shall work closely with the Springfield Township Fire Marshal to help prevent an accident and create a plan of action in the event that an accident does occur during the activity. That is my motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
And then, I just have one comment, because we seem to get more and more opposition to fireworks every year. Our policy is, there are three that traditionally go on in the township, and this is one of those three, and we will continue to do that. We at one point let a private party do that, and decided that was probably not a good idea, because it bothers dogs, it bothers some veterans, I understand. We also send out a blast email prior to these, just warning you that they're going to happen, should you be sensitive to it. So that's, so we're not changing anything by approving this. Any other comment? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
The next item is for a police sergeant. I move that the Board of Commissioners promote Police Corporal Christian Wilber to the position of police sergeant effective July 22, 2019. Sergeant Wilber was evaluated through a written examination and oral interview conducted by Safe City Solutions LLC, and also received an outstanding performance evaluation from the chief of police. That is my motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments?
I have a comment, Mr. President.
Go ahead.
My comment is, is that on this vote, I will be voting in the negative, because I'm sure this township is well aware, I promote, the promotion of women and minorities within our police department. It is my humble opinion that there was a female police corporal that stood out well above the candidates, in my, in my opinion. And I believe that this female officer, who was more educationally astute than our other two candidates, had scored higher on the written test than our other two candidates, had more written compliments from our township insofar as community policeman from the other candidates. And it is for that reason only that I think that this female officer should have been promoted to the rank of sergeant. So in that case, and in that case only, that I will be voting in the negative for this sergeant to be promoted. Thank you for that, Dawn, Mr. President.
Thank you. Do we have any other question or comment? Let me explain the way the process works. We mentioned it briefly with the Police Civil Service Commission. When there's an appointment or a promotion, there's a rigorous process with written tests and oral interviews done by several chiefs, and our chief puts in for the promotions, he gets some say in the matter. And then we get presented, the top three candidates come to us, and they are ranked and scored. And we are by law, unless one's a veteran, one's not, which isn't the case here, we are by law allowed to pick any of the three, but we typically pick the top one, particularly if the chief recommends that. And in this case, but we have every reason, if we want, to do otherwise, which is what Commissioner Graham is recommending.[1728.16] The one we picked was the one that was... Had the highest overall score and had the recommendation of the chief. So I just... And he's certain... We're all entitled to do what we want, and it's within the law to pick any of the three. Any other questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Please record a 6-1 vote.
Next item is for a police corporal. I move that the Board of Commissioners promote Police Officer Mark Konig to the position of police corporal effective July 22, 2019. Corporal Konig was evaluated through a written examination, oral interview conducted by Safe City Solutions LLC, and also received an outstanding performance evaluation from the chief of police. That is my motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
With those two promotions, those two promotions will fill vacancies which occurred as a result of the retirement of Corporal in May of 2019 and the reassignment of a sergeant from the patrol division to the traffic safety unit. Next item is local use of radar. Pennsylvania is the only state in the nation that prohibits municipal police from using radar and LiDAR, which are considered the safest, most efficient, and most economical speed-timing devices for law enforcement. In Springfield Township, speeding motors on local roads are one of the most common safety concerns voiced by constituents to the Springfield Township Board of Commissioners. Recently, the Pennsylvania State Senate passed by a vote of 49 to 1, Senate Bill 607 authorizing the use of radar and LiDAR by local police departments to enforce speed limits. The companion bill, House Bill 1686, is now before the State House of Representatives for consideration. Therefore, I move that the Board of Commissioners authorize a letter to be sent to State Representative Stephen McCarter endorsing the local use of radar for speed enforcement activities. That is my motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Now, just one comment. If some people in the room aren't familiar with the way the traffic enforcement is in Pennsylvania, if a question comes up, all too often for us. In a 25 mile an hour posted road, the enforceable speed limit by law doesn't happen until the car exceeds 35 miles an hour. So this is why we're supporting this bill and hope that Pennsylvania sort of gets up with the times with the rest of the nation and allows our police officers to have more effective traffic control. So that's kind of the comments I want to make on that.
Okay. Any other comment? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
Next. Next is the Police Civil Service Commission. I move that the Board of Commissioners reappoint Amy Samson to a new six-year term of service as a member of the Police Civil Service Commission. The new six-year term of service shall expire July 16, 2025. That is my motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
Shade Tree Commission. I move that the Board of Commissioners reappoint Ann Breen and Edward H. Ted Bell to new three-year terms of service as members of the Shade Tree Commission. The new three-year term of service shall expire July 13, 2022. That is my motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
That concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Maxwell. We move finally to the Chairman of the Zoning Committee, Commissioner Cobb.
Thank you, Mr. President. And not last for drama, just always last, so not to make you wait for the main event. But first, on my report, I do have an exciting announcement to announce, that National Night Out, which is an annual community-building campaign that enhances the relationship between neighbors and law enforcement while bringing a true sense of community. It's a chance to bring neighborhoods together with the men and women who protect them. National Night Out promotes the police-community partnership modery to make our township a better and safer place to live. The Springfield Township Police Department will celebrate their first annual National Night Out on August 6 this year, 69, at Flower Town Country Club. Bring the family out, enjoy a great night filled with guns, fun, games.
Start that again.
There should be some guns there as well, but it'll be mostly...
Tasers.
Filled with fun.
Mostly fun.
Games and entertainment, a chance to meet police officers and other first responders from the Springfield Township Police Department, local fire companies, and ambulance association. Police cars, fire trucks, ambulances, other vehicles will be on display. There'll be food, giveaways, demonstrations, and much, much more. Don't miss your chance to sink a police officer in the dunk tank. So in the spirit of National Night Out, please consider walking to the event if you are able. But it really should be... It's pretty exciting. Right, exactly. But it really is very exciting, some of the planning that's going into this. So if you are around, I really do hope that you can join us. Now, there will be no meeting of the zoning hearing board during the month of July, as there were no petitions received by the zoning hearing board. The next meeting of the zoning hearing board will be on Monday, August 26, at 7 p.m. in this township building. Finally, 380 and 402 Hawes Lane. On April 29, 2019, an application seeking zoning relief for the properties located at 380 and 402 Hawes Lane was filled with the zoning officer... Filed with the zoning officer requesting multiple variances to be granted in order to construct a four-story, 100-unit multifamily aged qualified residential building for persons aged 55 and older. The applicant MEH investment subsequently granted an extension of time by which the township must act on the application through September 30, 2019. I move that the Board of Commissioners of Springfield Township authorize the Office of the Township Solicitor to represent the interest of the Board of Commissioners in opposition to the zoning hearing board application of MEH investment as it relates to the construction of a four-story, 100-unit multifamily aged qualified residential building located at 380 and 402 Hawes Lane, Erdenheim.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any questions or comments?
I'll make a quick comment.
Okay.
I don't presume to know how everyone else is going to vote, but I know how the vote is going to shake out. I am sort of the odd position where I'm making the motion, but I am also going to vote against it. And primarily, it's because it really, it's a vote against... Because I think the process that we are... It's really a vote for the process that I don't want to see stifled by sending our solicitor to the meeting. Because ultimately, I think that that will put a kibosh on the project. And as was pointed out, this property is going to get sold. And, you know, I think that if anyone doubts my sincerity with regards to how much time I have personally put into this, I've been in a lot of your homes and looked at you in the eyes and listened to you and heard you, and it pains me to vote against you because I do know that, you know, the project as it exists right now would be not the best thing for your neighborhood. But I do think that the opportunity to work with the developer in honing it and making it into a project that could be something that the neighborhood lives with, either through less stories, less units, less parking, whatever it may be, is an option through this process. My fear is that with a vote tonight to ask our solicitor to oppose the project, the developer will pull the application, it'll go away. Either they will continue to buy the property or someone else will. But someone else will is going to look at this process and say that they don't want to go through it. So they're going to build something by right. And unfortunately, if it's an institutional building, by right is an equally difficult building to stomach. If it's purchased and built with the previous plans that were sort of locked into, you know, I don't know if that's the best option for our community either. So in a vote for the process, I think that it is a benefit to not send our solicitor in opposition and let this process play out. Because ultimately, I believe in the zoning hearing board, which again is made up of neighbors, other residents who live in the area. And I think that the ultimate ask for a use variance, to go from institutional to multifamily residential, is a huge ask. And I think that if nobody showed up, it would still be a tough ask, but to have, you know, even a handful of residents show up, I think that it would be a much easier declination. But at the very least, I want to make an impassioned plea for engagement, an engagement with the developer, or a developer, because if we can get to a place where it's a win-win for everybody, I think that that is ultimately going to be the best option and the best opportunity. Because again, what I am so fearful of is that this property will sell, it has to, unfortunately, and someone's going to come in and they're going to build something by right, and we're going to have no recourse at all to prevent that. We can lie in front of tractors and we can tie ourselves to trees, but I mean, it'll get done legally because there's just no right to oppose that. So that is why I'm sort of in favor of just letting this process play out and dialing back some of the hyperbolic language. You know, it has been a very heartbreaking debate because of... I'm sorry?
Please, 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 yeah.
Because of just, I think, some of the insinuations, some of the vitriol that has been thrown at members of the community, on the board, the developers. And I think that if we can just dial that all way back, I think that at the end of the day, my kids go to that school, too. My kids walk halls as well. So the suggestion that I would do something or want something in place that is going to be dangerous to the community, it's in front of me. You know, and I do remember very starkly, when I was knocking on doors a couple of years ago, having people make pleas to me about the... How expensive this township is to live in. And we do have a very silent minority of individuals who are being priced out of this area. Some of them for age, some of them are just means. The fact of the matter is, we've had a static population for decades with very little growth. We don't have a big tax base. So it's a choice we need to make as a complete community to decide, you know what, we want to kind of keep that enclave as it is, but we will see people get priced out of being able to live here. And I'm not sug...
Please, please, please.
I'm not suggesting...
Please, Bob, Bob, let him... If you stop filibustering, he'll be done and we can move forward.
I'm not suggesting that this project would be a solve-all, but I do think that there is a real need for housing for our older residents in the town. And I'll leave it at that. Appreciate your kindness, Bob. But that... Just wanted to give my explanation because I know it's unpopular in the room, and it's very hard, obviously, to say, but it's something I do believe very strongly in, and I'll leave it at that.
Great, thank you. Do we have any other public comment at this point? Okay, there. So this is the motion to send the solicitor in opposition. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Please record a 6-1 vote. Does that conclude your report, Jonathan? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I want to wrap this up. So I'll just say we heard you. It's a process, and thank you for the homework and a lot of relevant things. We are open for public comment again if anybody wants to say anything, or if not, we can go home with a smile. Going once, going twice. Okay, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.
Look at that.